Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the June 28th, 2016 School Board of Seminole County's meeting to order. Unfortunately, we have to start the meeting this evening on a sad note. Unfortunately, we've lost one of our Seminole County Public Schools family members recently. Ms. Susan Vogt worked as a PE teacher for over thirty years and has been teaching at Caroline Elementary School since the school opened. Prior to serving the students at Caroline, she had a PE teacher also at Sterling Park, Idowild, and Stenstrom Elementary. She actually began her career at Dover Shores Elementary in Orange County in 1977. With that type of career, she had the opportunity to impact thousands of students. She worked to instill in children a love for physical activity, sports, and games. Mrs. Vogt was also respected by her colleagues with her calm presence and will be tremendously missed. If you'll all please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. At this point in time, I'd like to turn it over to Mrs. Schaffner to share an invocation and the pledge with us all this evening.
Unfortunately, we have had acts of terrorism in our country, in our own backyard, very, very recently. It wasn't in Washington, it wasn't in New York, it wasn't in Pennsylvania, it wasn't in Paris. It was in Central Florida, in Orlando. A shock to all of us when we woke up that Sunday morning and heard what had happened. When I heard my minister talk about it in church, I had not heard anything about it up to that point, and I was as shocked as I'm sure you were. It kind of brings us back to realize that not everybody feels like we do about this country and about the freedom that we have. And it reminded me that this coming weekend, we're going to be celebrating July 4th, Independence Day, which is a landmark date for the United States of America. And I hope all of you will join me on that day and for this weekend in raising the American flag and thanking God for the freedom that we have and those who died to have that freedom for us. And I wanted to share a poem with you tonight called "The Fourth of July" very appropriately by Bob Beliett. "It's time again to fly our flag with much respect and pride. It is our country's birthday, this fourth day of July. As we enjoy the fireworks, the picnics, and parades, let us reflect on all the things that make our country great. Is it those rights we cherish, the freedoms we enjoy, equality in law that's guaranteed to every girl and boy? The answer's yes for most of us, not all of that, I'm sure, for many in our country still much suffering they endure. The many that are hated because they don't fit in, because they have different customs or the color of their skin. Yet we are all Americans from every walk of life, claiming equal and fair treatment, protection from all strife. We're in this land together, we're brothers, sisters, all. United, we attain great goals; divided, we shall fall. So on our country's birthday, let's pledge for all to see, we'll strive to live together in peace and harmony. Our future will be brighter. God bless us, I do pray." And with one voice now, let us say, "Happy Birthday, USA." Please stand for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaffner. Let the record reflect that all school board members are in attendance except for Mr. Bauer. Also in attendance are the school board attorney and superintendent. Now?
Nope. Try again.
Good evening.
It's low.
Very low.
Okay. Dr. Griffin, do you have any agenda modifications?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair. The first one is the addendum for good cause is marked on our electronic agenda by a green flag named "Addendum Item." And the second one from page 218 of our agenda, I'm going to pull item 4L, which is voluntary disability, cancer, accident, hospital, and long-term care insurance renewal plan, plan year 2017.
Thank you. And board members, do you have any modifications or items selected for removal? First, Member Almond.
I have a comment on 4AN.
Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Member Schaffner.
None, thank you.
Vice Chairman Lockhart.
I don't have any either, thanks.
Okay. I would like to appoint Ms. Almond to item 4T to represent our board if you're willing. Thank you for representing us on that committee. And I'm also pulling for Y for separate consideration. Seeing no other modifications, do I have an approval for the agenda outline?
So moved.
Decca?
There's a motion. And second, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, do we have any presentations or recognition?
We have six introductions this evening.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Dr. Griffin and school board members. On behalf of elementary executive directors, Dr. Cummings and Dr. Dullinger, I'd like to introduce to you the newest member of the elementary school family, Ms. Lisa Phillips. Ms. Lisa Phillips is the new assistant principal of Highlands Elementary. She graduated from Stetson University with a master's in educational leadership. She taught first grade and kindergarten at Longwood and Altamont Elementary. For the past two years, she served as the school administration manager at Altamont Elementary. Joining her tonight, if you all would like to stand, is her family members Patty Phillips, Buzz Phillips, Kristy Epley, and Brooke Lautermilk, and her principal, Lenora Lockston. Thank you and welcome.
Dr. Griffin and board members, it is my pleasure to introduce three new high school assistant principals tonight. First, new assistant principal at Lyman High School, Natalie Cumby. Natalie was born in Lexington, Virginia. Her father was a retired Colonel in the Army, which required her to move fourteen times growing up. She graduated from high school in Augusta, Georgia, and went on to attend THE Florida State University and Florida A&amp;M University. She earned her education, I'm sorry, she earned her bachelor's degree in mathematics at Florida A&amp;M and her master's degree in educational leadership from Nova Southeastern. Prior to starting her career in education, she was a stay-at-home mom for seven years. She began her career at Olympia High School as an algebra teacher, then worked at Lakeview Middle School as dean before going back to Olympia as dean and girls' basketball coach. She obtained her first assistant principal position at Chainah Lakes Middle School and then transitioned to West Orange as an assistant principal. She has just celebrated her twenty-fifth year of marriage to her husband Eric, and they have three beautiful daughters, Ariana, twenty-one, Sierra, nineteen, and they both attend Palm Beach Atlantic University on basketball academic scholarships. And Raven will be a sophomore. With her tonight, also just be standing, stand and be recognized, her mom, Jacqueline Nichols, her husband, Eric Cumby, stand up, and her daughter, Raven Cumby. Natalie Cumby. Also welcome, at Oviedo High School Assistant Principal Jason McDonald. Jason is a product of Seminole County Public Schools, graduated from Oviedo in 2000. From there, he attended Florida State University, received a Bachelor of Science in Science, Social Science Education. After Florida State, he attended the University of Central Florida and received a Master of Arts degree in Social Science. Finally, in 2014, Jason received his Doctorate of Education degree in Educational Leadership culminating in a dissertation regarding the lack of enrollment of traditionally underserved minority students in advanced placement courses. With nine years of service in Seminole County, Jason's taught AP Human Geography, US History at Oviedo for seven years, and he was an AP Reader for College Board for six years. He has been to Germany to study German school system under the Fulbright Program. He traveled to South Korea and the Korean Society to facilitate a greater understanding of US-South Korea relations with his students. And he's worked for the past two years as the school administration manager at Oviedo. With him tonight are Jason's mother and father, Kathy and Kevin McDonald, please stand. His children, Kaitlyn and Colin, his girlfriend, Lauren Fetty, his brother David McDonald, and his nephew Logan. And he also wore Oviedo colors tonight, so we're very proud of that. And last but not least, Hagerty High School new assistant principal, Dr. Doug Miller. Doug has a bachelor and a master's degree in clinical psychology and a doctorate in ed leadership. He is administrative dean at Boone High School. He was a teacher and administrative dean at Gateway Middle School. He was a mental health counselor from 2004 to 2007 and served in the US Army from 1995 to 1998. Family members with him tonight, please stand, his wife Sarah, daughter Aubrey, daughter Brynlee Kate, daughter Cheyenne, his father and mother, Steve Miller and Deborah Miller. Congratulations, Dr. Doug Miller.
Good evening, Superintendent Griffin and board members. It is my pleasure to introduce Dr. Jason Weisong, our new executive director of ePathways and strategic partnerships. Dr. Weisong has his undergraduate and master's degree from University of Florida. Go Gators! He has his specialist and doctorate in educational leadership from the University of Central Florida and is completing his sixteenth year in education. Dr. Weisong has an awesome son named Benjamin that's entertaining everyone right now and will let him continue to do that. In addition, Dr. Weisong's wife, Nicole, Nicole, if you'll join us, please. One of our assistant principals, most recently at Seminole High School, previously Lake Brantley High School. You've all met Benjamin and his parents, please stand, Carl and Terry Weisong, sister Amanda and niece Sophia, and brother Justin. Congratulations, Dr. Weisong.
Dr. Griffin, board members, I have one more addition. We have a very special recognition, another assistant principal at the high school level. I'd like to welcome Seminole High School's new assistant principal, Michelle Backle. Michelle has also been at Hagerty High School. She was Sam at Seminole High School. And with her tonight, if you could stand, please, her husband Richard and her daughter Allison.
Dr. Griffin.
Okay, for our next recognition, I would like to invite the Seminole County Sheriff-Elect of Mr. Dennis Leva.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin and board members. It is my absolute honor tonight to introduce Captain Rick Francis of the Seminole County Sheriff's Office, who's here with his wife, Stephanie, and his two boys, Hunter and Zachary. Captain Francis is newly promoted from the rank of lieutenant to captain and has had a remarkable career, starting with his education, both his undergraduate and graduate degree in criminal justice. And because of the relationship that Seminole County Sheriff's Office has with our wonderful school board, he serves right now as the school safety and security manager. He's been with the Sheriff's Office for a total of ten years and has ascended the rank, serving as an investigator, deputy sheriff, major crimes unit, and specialized services lieutenant. He performs in a leadership role on our SWAT team, and he truly has dedicated his entire adult life to public service, both in law enforcement, as well as serving eight years in the military, both in the Navy as well as the Army. He's also graduated of the Southern Police Institute Command Officers Academy, and it is an honor and privilege to work with him and congratulate him on his promotion to captain within our organization and the partnership that he has with the school board. Thank you.
Mrs. Almond, when you're ready, you had some questions on 4AN.
I don't have a question, I just have a comment on it. I just wanted to thank Minnie Cardona and her team for putting the document together because I found it very informative, very well done. It's a really good overview of all the world languages and offerings that we have in the district, great handy reference tool. So, thank you, Minnie.
Thank you, Ms. Cardona and your entire team. We know how much you work above and beyond the call of duty. Board members, are there any other comments or questions on any other agenda items on the consent agenda? Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
That the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
There's a motion. And second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. I had pulled item 4Y for separate consideration pursuant to Florida State Statute, Section 112.3143. And to avoid even the appearance of a conflict, I am abstaining from this vote as it may result in a special gain or loss of my husband. So, at this point in time, Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation for 4Y?
Yes, I do. That the School Board of Seminole County approve the recommendation of the evaluation committee, award, request, or proposal number 15160055P-DW voluntary group dental plan to the firm listed below and approved the attached agreement.
So moved.
There's a motion. And second, any discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like, sign. And I will abstain. Motion carries three, zero. Student disciplinary hearing dispositions. Dr. Griffin, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do. That the School Board of Seminole County approve the student disciplinary recommendations from Monday, June 13th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion. And second, any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. We've reached the point of our agenda for public comment. I do have two individuals who wish to address the board. Vice Chairman Lockhart, could you please share our policies regarding public comment?
I would be happy to. The public input segment of the meeting is provided to allow the public to present specific matters to the school board for its consideration and referral to the superintendent and staff for inquiry and action or to address specific items on the agenda. The public input segment of the meeting is not open to presentation of campaign issues by political candidates or others, student disciplinary actions, pending employee disciplinary matters, or pending litigation. Our policy 9.63 on civility and conduct of parents and other visitors to schools and school district facilities states that it is not the intent of the school board to deprive any person of his or her right of freedom of expression. It is, however, the intent of the board to promote mutual respect, civility, and orderly conduct on the part of members of the public appearing before the board. The school board expects positive communication and will not permit disruptive, volatile, hostile, or aggressive communication on the part of speakers. Speakers are limited to three minutes and must clearly identify the matter to be addressed on the speaker's signup form. Speakers shall direct their comments only to the board and may not address the audience. Speakers that do not comply with this direction will be asked to leave the lectern. And if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you so much. First, I'd like to call Lara Gutten Tag to the podium, and then on deck, Tracy Reader, please.
Good evening. Good evening. A nation's greatness is measured by how it treats its weakest members.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sorry. Lara Gutten Tag, 3364 Red Ash Circle.
And where is that?
In Oviedo, Florida.
Okay, thank you.
A nation's greatness is measured by how it treats its weakest members. My son Mitchell is a third grader with high functioning autism. It is well settled that the autistic population has extreme difficulties grasping the nuances and inferences necessary for reading comprehension. They're very literal, they don't get metaphors and slang. The main component of the third grade test is reading comprehension. The penalty of not performing well is mandatory retention. The Florida Association of School Psychologists urged our legislature to repeal the practice of retention and state, "No other educational practice is as demonstrably harmful to students as the practice of grade retention." Retention is bad for students in general. Couple that with the social deficits of autism and it's disastrous. Right as Mitch starts fitting in with his peer group, you're going to rip him out of it. How will it be next year for Mitchell, who's at the ninety-seventh percentile for height and about to turn ten? How are things for him right now? Obsessing and panicking about staying back when all his friends go on to fourth. Doesn't that sound like a civil rights violation and a violation of the ADA? When I relay this to the district, I get sympathy and understanding. Then I talk about what actually happened to Mitchell his third grade year. Were my son's days filled with learning appropriate reading comprehension skills from a highly-qualified teacher? A rich environment of neurologically appropriate strategies designed to optimize his chances? No. This was his first year being mainstreamed. We wanted to mainstream with lots of ASD support because Mitch is intelligent, great at math and science, and good grades. He got very little ASD support and started with a teacher who was absent all the time and ultimately resigned. There were many substitutes, no consistency, much upheaval. I spoke with the principal to voice my concerns about retention. She assured me repeatedly not to worry that they didn't really do that, and last year, all the kids promoted. A complete misrepresentation, but I bought it. The issue of retention surfaced again, and at the end of the school year, Mitchell's report card said retained at third grade. Mitch and his classmates got another teacher. When she started, she hadn't yet graduated from college, no teaching or ASD experience. The rest of the year, Mitch came home with classwork with every answer wrong. He wasn't grasping the concepts. We spent hours teaching him ourselves, but it was too late. The end of the year found us haggling over accommodations. It was a mess. The IEP meetings were a revolving door, participants in and out to get to other meetings constantly glancing at the clock. This is not how IEP meetings should go. Did I just describe a free and appropriate public education? Of course not. We have to do better. Let me tell you about special needs moms.
Mrs. Gutten Tag, thank you so much. If you'd like to share the rest of our comments for us, I see you have them typed up. We'd be more than happy to read them. And if you have the time, perhaps Dr. Walsh, you could meet with this family and see what we can do to help you.
Thank you.
I hope you will share your comments. I would like to finish reading what you had to say.
That would become part of the record. I appreciate you coming out this evening. Tracy Reader? And if you could state your name and address as well, we'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tracy Reader. I live at 1011 Lake Carney Woods Boulevard, Memes, Florida, 32754. My name again is Tracy Reader. My son, Jaden, goes to Parton Elementary. I'm here because I'm concerned about the future of the self-contained ASD program at Parton. Jaden was originally zoned to go to-
Could you speak into the microphone so we can-
Yes.
Thank you.
Pull it right down. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. Self-contained ASD program at Parton. Jaden was originally zoned to go to Geneva Elementary where his aunt was Teacher of the Year not too long ago. Jaden started kindergarten in a gen ed classroom at Geneva. He had not been diagnosed with autism yet, but had been diagnosed with sensory and auditory processing disorder at age three. I was very careful to make sure administrators at Geneva were aware of his diagnosis, but the first day of school, they had him in the principal's office the entire day without calling me. The second day, had him in the vice principal's office, half the day before they called me to pick him up. Every morning, I had to drag my five-year-old kicking and screaming from my car to get him to class. This continued for six weeks until he was formally diagnosed by administrators with autism and moved to Parton. In contrast, the first day at Parton, Jaden took the ASD teacher's hand, and I never had an issue getting him out of the car after that. There are many reasons for Jaden's sudden change of attitude. Much of that has to do with his comfort level, both sensory-wise and with the awareness and preparedness of his teacher. His kindergarten year at Parton was a glowing success. Starting his first grade year, however, Parton got a new principal. The ASD teacher he had in kindergarten moved over the summer. In the following two years, we had two new vice principals. The ASD staff went from three teachers, four para professionals, one floating assistant, two room moms, and one volunteer, to this coming year, having two teachers, two paras, a part-time reading resource teacher. Meanwhile, many parents have felt pressured to mainstream children who still have IEPs and significant challenges without having the available staff for facilitating those transitions. Also, services such as speech therapy are being removed. As a result, at least one student is now being held back that had been successful in the ASD classroom. Knowing these children and families personally, if this continues, more of the kids will face the added injury to their self-image of having to repeat a grade. I'm very disturbed by this trend. In South Florida, one Palm Beach County school has fifteen classrooms for ASD students, one class for every grade level, one for every level of functioning. They also requested and received a grant for a sensory room just for ASD kids who needed it.
Mrs. Reader, thank you so much for your input. Again, if you do have additional comments, if you'd like to share it with the clerk, she can make sure that all of us get it to read it. And Dr. Walsh, could you also meet with Mrs. Reader? Thank you. I appreciate it. Dr. Griffin, do you have any unfinished or new business?
No, but we have two new business items. The first, my recommendation is that each member of the school board individually determines whether he or she will join FSBA, and if so, authorizes the board clerk to submit a prorated share of the FSBA invoice for each such member.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. So, at this point in time, I'd like to take a roll call vote on whether or not you'd like our clerk to send your prorated share for FSBA dues. And first, I'll call Member Almond, please.
Okay. I thought you were going to do another formal vote, and so I do actually have a couple of comments.
Okay.
I went to the meeting at FSBA where they discussed the dues, and they really don't have any kind of an exact formula. They could not find a history as to how they charged. They think it had to do with populations in the school districts. With the change in administration for FSBA, one of the things they're going to look at moving forward is if you join and have a membership at FSBA, that there will be certain perks that you will receive that others who just go to conventions or take advantage of training will not have. So, I wanted to share that with you before we take our vote.
Okay. Anything else that anyone feels they need to share before we do a roll call vote?
Well, you know, it's interesting. I reached out to the new executive director twice via email to ask her for some clarifications on some information that we all received. Where the inference, well, it wasn't an inference, it was stated that the information we received was inaccurate. And I was hoping she would be able to outline for me exactly-
And I was hoping she would be able to outline for me exactly what was inaccurate, because that was going to help me make my decision. But I've yet to hear back from her, and it's been almost, well, it's been more than two weeks now, and I've sent a couple of emails. So I would have liked to have had that response from her. Unfortunately, without it, I don't know what other communication they would have provided us. And that's not the sole basis for my decision, but it was, it didn't help to change my mind.
Mrs. Almond.
I guess in addition to that, I say, for this year coming, I guess I'll tip my vote. I want to use those dollars, maybe explore some other options. We have limited dollars. In the future, when they determine what we're going to have as a benefit, I may change my mind.
Understood. Ms. Schaffner.
I did have conversation with her as well, and I know when we had had our work session, it had come up about NSBA, because you had attended that conference up in Boston. But we don't pay dues directly to NSBA, but FSBA does. They pay $50,000 a year to NSBA for us to be members of NSBA and be allowed to attend their conference, et cetera. So I think things are going to change as far as what we will be allowed or not allowed to do, or what we will be having to pay. So just that comment I wanted to make, because I did have a conversation with her.
Okay. And as you know, I represent this board on the Finance Committee, and many of those decisions were pushed down because the Finance Committee can't make a total decision. It goes to the entire board with FSBA. And as you know, it usually takes cycles of a year or two to get movement in a direction of certain activities. So that's how I'm basing my vote, because I know there's other opportunities in the country. So seeing no further comments, I'll ask first Member Almond, please.
Okay. I am going to, I'm not going to re-up for next year.
Thank you. Member Schaffner.
I'm not going to re-up.
Vice Chairman Lockhart.
I am not going to join FSBA either.
And I also will not join FSBA. And if you could reach out to Member Bauer to ascertain whether or not he would like to join, that would be helpful.
This does not preclude us from attending FSBA events. I just wanted to be sure that was part of it.
Correct. Okay. Thank you very much. And Dr. Griffin, another recommendation?
Yes. Second new business item, that the School Board of Seminole County approved the advertising of the tentative budget and millage rates for 2016, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and second, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Griffin, your superintendent's report, please.
Yes, there's one item that I would like Marjorie Murray and Dr. Cody to come up to talk about, the public input plan for the Every Student Succeeds Act. I think it's important for us to get that word out. We're going to put it on our website, social media, so that the public has an opportunity to respond to the commissioner.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. We're very fortunate that Marjorie Murray is really a national expert in this federal legislation, and has been working with several districts in her role as the Director of ECTAC, and is also working with a team in Seminole, trying to discern the appropriate public feedback to represent our board's views. And so the information item that's in the board book was the most current information we had at the time of publication of the book. Recently, this additional information was posted on the DOE website, and that site is listed in the board book, but you can see it right here. It's FLDOE.org/Academics, and then there's an ESSA link that you can go to. And it was noted in this link that the public input will be open until July 22nd. That's new information, and that's important, because many of our most interested stakeholders are not in school, they're not aware of this, our parents are on vacation, and there's lots of opportunity for input. Now is really the time to get involved and state what you believe Florida's plan should include. This site is very nice. It's divided into the nine areas, and in particular, I'm going to click on academic assessments, because that's one that we're very interested in. And you can see that each person who completes the survey will be asked to fill out some information identifying who they are. And then each section has a link that can help you look at the information they're asking you to respond to in the comment box below. And so I'm going to go to, for example, the exception for advanced mathematics in middle school, and this is one that our team is talking about. And you can see that the provision for the state plan is only for grade eight students who take an end-of-course math assessment. We know in Seminole, we have many seventh-grade students who take Algebra I, and then they go on and take geometry in the eighth grade. Occasionally, we'll have a sixth grader, that's rare, but it has happened. So that was the first point that our team brought up about. We really need to write about that. When you click on the link, it will take you to the document, and it'll highlight for you the section that you should read prior to responding, so that you can see all the information aligned with that section. It's very user-friendly, and you don't have to reply to every single question. You can select questions of interest that you might like to consider responding to. This is another one, the locally-selected assessment, and you'll see there perhaps some opportunity to state why the Seminole/Sunshine solution is such an important opportunity for our students. And so again, you would click there, you go to the particular piece in the document that will tell you what the rules are, and they're really complicated for the state to go and determine whether or not a particular assessment will be approved by them. And then we have, if there's an assessment approved and the superintendent and board elect to use that, we have obligations to communicate with our students and our parents about what we're using and so forth. So we, again, we're preparing some responses as a team for that particular item. And Marjorie, if you'd like to update on any other areas of interest.
There is another area of interest, and you'll see it. It's called Direct Student Services, and you may have heard about this from another avenue or another source, but we're strongly encouraging all of our districts, 42 districts now in our ECTAC network, that if you don't have time to respond to anything, please respond to this. And let me tell you what it means to you. It means that under NCLB, the state was required to withhold, and still is, 1% for state administration, and it was required to hold 3%, 4% for school improvement. Under the new law, it moves from school improvement from 4% to 7%. So already, there would be a deficit of Title I funding to our school district and across the state to all school districts of 3%. This, which is called Direct Student Services, is optional to the state. The state does not have to withhold another 3%, and then in turn factor it back to us in some kind of a format, or maybe not to us, all to one or two school districts. So we're encouraging, please communicate, that you really don't want the state withholding money that they don't have to from your funds. So instead of a deficit of 3%, we would have a deficit of 6% if that's withheld. And that's in the section called Direct Student Services. And we, at the state, I was at the State Board of Education meeting last week, and they're strongly encouraging individuals, they want to hear from groups, but they're very strongly encouraging individuals to put in input, and they're going to read every bit of input that they have. This is the point to be proactive. Once a state develops their plan, and there's no date for that yet, although they're working in August and September to develop the legislative platform in the state that would parallel what's in ESSA, once the plan is out, then we're in a reactive mode and not a proactive mode. So anything we can do, especially in that area of academic assessment, then they're strongly encouraging.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Lockhart.
Just have a couple of questions. One that you may not be able to answer, because I'm going to ask you to jump inside the brains of the people who were proposing this, but what do you think the rationale was behind the additional 3%?
My honest opinion is that it is a way to circumvent something that was very unpopular in NCLB, which was SES and student, SES portion, Supplemental Educational Services. And if you read some of the language, it sounds very much like the old SES. Our point is, it's our money, let us keep our money, because we know how to make decisions on our money. And the state really has come out and said, "We're going to poll the districts, and we'll really go with majority." So the message that we get in that is, please speak up. And that's why I'm encouraging as many districts as possible, because I don't think the state really wants to withhold that extra 3%. But they're going to be receiving a great deal of pressure from the other side, the private providers, the SES, the, you know, a lot of factors that go into play. So it's real important to have a voice at this point, and the state wants us to.
And just for overall, bigger picture, when someone is filling this out, it goes to a person at DOE?
There is a group of people at DOE that are really spearheading the development of the state plan.
And then those folks will present that plan to?
The public, again. Stakeholders, the public, and there's an opportunity to react at that point to the plan. But if we have some things that we feel very strongly about as a school district, now's the time to be proactive. Let's suggest to the state how we think the plan should look in some areas that are closest to us.
Ultimately, I just, I want to know, is this going to be voted on by the state board?
Yes. And at the meeting last week, the State Board of Education made it clear that they had asked the department, "Would you please educate us," the board, meaning the state board, "on what ESSA is about?" Because we're all reading different articles, and we're all attending different meetings, but we're getting different slants from different organizations. So they reached out to the department and said, "Please educate us." And that was one of the state board members that is looking, you know, very strong to the state to have an education regarding what this entails.
Fantastic. Thank you.
And the only other thing that I'd like to add, and I know we do a great job trying to communicate to all the stakeholders, but as you said, it's a very difficult period of time, in that many of our 10-month employees aren't on campus, but if there's any way we could reach out through the BAB, through our PTA leadership, through the SAC committees, electronically even, I think they really need to be brought up to speed of how important this is. And even from the Chamber of Commerce standpoint, when we came forward with the Sunshine Solution, we got a lot of support from the businesses locally, and I think that would lend even more credibility. So I'm sure staff, Dr. Griffin, is working on some soundbites or some consistent messages with explanations. It's not that I want people not to put their own opinions in, but I think sometimes, as you could see, how many avenues you could click on, no one is an expert at all. So if, as a district, we could come up with some priorities that we could hand out in boiler sheets to our different constituency groups, I think that might help us.
And if I could just add one more thing, I'm so sorry. There are constituency groups, I noticed right below, as they were scrolling down, one of the next things had to do with testing students with exceptionalities, I think was one of the ones right below it, and I thought of the moms who spoke tonight. And I think that it's very important that when we have parents who have specific concerns with children who have exceptionalities, that we make this available and make them aware, because certainly through social media and all sorts of different networking, different parent groups have the ability to reach out to parent groups that we will never get to, certainly not by July 22nd. So I don't know if Michael Lawrence might be able to help us from a social media aspect of putting together something that would be quick and easy for us to share quickly, that would be fantastic, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Dr. Griffin, anything else that you wanted to report on, or are they read-only?
They are read-only, but board members, thank you for your attention to that piece, because it really is important. And I will tell you, we have a really good draft because of Ms. Murray. I had a long conversation with Patricia Levesque last week, and this is really what it was about, and we'll summarize and share that with you as appropriate. But this is an opportunity for us. Remember, we had this opportunity with accountability, and I felt like frequently, a lot of people wanted a lot of things, but never gave the input, so we have to really do what we can do to get the word out there. That's all from me, Dr. Calvin.
Thank you, Dr. Griffin. I appreciate it. Moving on to board member comments and committee updates. Member Almond.
Well, I think we had a really good conversation with the Board of County Commissioners today, so I really appreciate that. And I want to ask Mr. Rinaldi if he'll share the files with us, did he give us hard copy? Electronically, please. Thank you. And some of us went to the NAACP dinner the other evening, where Mr. Kenneth Bentley was honored from Hamilton Elementary. He got the humanitarian awards, so congratulations to Mr. Bentley. And even though I voted to not support the membership in FSBA, there is great value in what they offer us. They had outstanding keynote speaker, his name was Len Forgus, and he wrote a book called What Spins the Wheel, it's Leadership Lessons from a Race for Hope that he did. His youngest son was diagnosed with cancer, and he started raising money. He felt like his child was removed from the classroom, and so he started putting technology in the home of the child who had cancer, and affording opportunities to other children as well, so they could interact with their peers the whole time they were going through treatment. Amazing, amazing story, and he's encouraged a lot of others as well. I'm going to share tomorrow with all of you a link to all the documents from all the breakout sessions from FSBA, so if you want to pull any of those documents, you can. And then congratulations to Florida Hospital for their new ER in Lake Mary, that was awesome. And Future Ready Leaders, awesome. Dr. Griffin, thank you for putting that together. We talked about communication, collaboration, and interpersonal skills in depth at our table. And then I have the Power of You on my calendar, and I'm not sure if it's Sean, Guard Herald. I would love to have an agenda and a timeline on that event, so we could start picking and choosing some things to attend.
We'll get a copy to all board members.
Thank you. And I have a date on hold in mid-July for a legislative delegation meeting. Are we, do you know if we're having that?
There was a date, July 14th, which we had a hold on that we're not using, but there was a later date, I think July 26th. Does that-
July 26th is our work session on legislative priorities, and it was moved from today to July 26th. But I don't, I saw, I know what you're talking about, I don't know what that is.
That was just a conversation that happened, and I threw that up there.
Gotcha.
Okay. I think that's all that I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Schaffner.
And I, too, agree that the meeting today, the joint meeting with the county commission, was very productive, and I'm very pleased that we're going to make that an annual event, because I feel like we have so much in common. And they operate differently than we do by statute. So I think it's always a good idea for us to get together with other entities to let them know what our challenges are, et cetera. And actually, we, I'm trying to think of the TAC for word. Never mind, I'm going to keep going. FSBA, I thought, was great. We had some wonderful speakers over there. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I think I probably will continue to go to the event over there, but I, too, want to look around and see what else is available. But we really did have a very good session over there when we went, a couple of weeks ago. And I also represented the board at the chamber, the regional chamber annual meeting that they had last week, and elected, they had their annual meeting, elected new board members, et cetera. So that's it.
Great. Vice Chairman Lockhart.
Representing the board on the Value Adjustment Board, we met last week, where we hired the new magistrates and alternates for all of the hearings that will be held this next year. And we did vote to hold the rates the same this year for the magistrates as has been in years prior, so we won't hopefully see an increase in cost to us there. We also voted to rehire the Value Adjustment Board attorney, and his rate stayed the same as well. We had an insurance committee meeting this week. A lot of the focus of the discussion was on telemedicine. Thank you very much, Ben, for providing that information to different providers that Cigna is talking about working with right now. And one of the questions that I had, and Mrs. Herr from Highland is here tonight also, and she had done a lot of what I call the math for us, I believe, on the return on investment of telemedicine. So not only was it a great benefit for our employees to have the ability to make that phone call, there's also a significant return, I believe, for us financially. And so maybe Mrs. Herr- And so maybe Mrs. Herr, just if we could get that to all of the board members to see, that would be fantastic. And added some new members to the insurance committee meeting, to the insurance committee from our staff, and they all seem incredibly engaged and happy to be there. So that's good, we'll take, they're happy for now, we'll see if they stay happy right now, they seem very content, so that's great.
Brand new, right?
They're brand new. In addition to the VCC workshop session this morning, which we had, which was good, we were able to meet with the City of Sanford last week, which was another great opportunity to get to talk with fellow elected officials and share common concerns and ways that we could work together. And I just wanted to send a shout-out to Mayor Jeff Triplet, and continue to send thoughts and prayers to him and his family for the crime that was committed against him this last week, horrifying, and so Jeff, we send you thoughts and prayers. I attended a webinar hosted by the Florida Coalition of School Board Members a couple of weeks ago, that was actually related to House Bill 7029, which we just voted on about the alternatives that school board members now have about associations, membership associations. And it was great to be able to not have to drive anywhere, we were able to talk, school board members from all around the state, share what things they were doing in their county that were going to work or maybe not work, and so I would highly encourage you, even if you're not interested in joining the coalition, we can at least, you can call in to those conference calls, because they really are, the go-to meetings and the webinars really are, can be very beneficial. And they typically, especially during legislative session, have some movers and shakers from the legislature that want to call in and hear from us, which is really nice. Last week, I took a field trip down to Lake Wales, I don't know if you all knew, I did not know, that apparently the entire community of Lake Wales many years ago voted to secede from the Polk County School District, and they created, I know, they created their own essentially charter district. So they did charter conversions of elementary and a high, several elementaries and a high school, and then they created their own Bach Academy Middle School Charter School. And they will be a wonderful partner for us, I believe, in the future. I spent many, many hours speaking with their superintendent and the principal of the middle school, very technology-oriented, very forward-thinking, they're a Title I basically district, they're doing great things, and I'm looking forward to, I gave Dr. Griffin the contact information, I would love for the superintendent and that middle school principal to meet with any of you, but especially Dr. Griffin and Dr. Calderon, to see what they're doing. I think we want many of the same things after talking with them, and we maybe even have some opportunities to partner on some lobbying efforts together. So that was kind of neat, the Bach Academy Charter School in Lake Wales.
Wow, great, thanks for spending the time doing that. As you know, we always recognize students for winning state or national championships, and this isn't really a state championship of a student, but one of our very own, Bobby Lundquist, who retired as a principal of a veto high school, was named the Florida State Golf Association Super Seniors Match Play Champion this year. So he asked if he was going to be invited to the school board meeting, and I didn't say yes, but I wanted to give him a shout-out to show that, especially Dr. Blazewitz, there is life after retirement, and so we will recognize you as well when you come and get your state championships. I know you'll work hard on that. I concur with all of my fellow members of having the wonderful joint work sessions with both the City of Sanford and Seminole County Government, and I know we talked about this in some of our open discussions, but we talked about a few years ago, or maybe even last year, we actually had a joint work session with all of the cities. Is that something that you would like us to schedule within the year? Is there an update that you'd want all the cities together, or shall we just do the one up with the organizations as we see fit, if we have joint needs?
I think the cities would like to meet with us, and I don't mind doing it all together, I mean, what's, I don't think we want to meet individually, it's hard enough to get one committee together, but I think it's good communication, and it's good PR.
So, while I agree with that, we may have more issues coming up with other cities, like perhaps Longwood, so maybe some cities might require extended period of time where, you know, in other city, we may not have as much to talk, so maybe, I don't know.
If you'd like, I could bring it up at the next mayors and managers to see, I didn't want to make the offer, though, to the cities if you wanted it to be done in a different way, but I'd be more than willing to ask if there was any.
A lot of the things that were said today, I think the cities would be interested in.
That's true, too.
And I felt like, because I thought Joe did a good job of presenting, you know, what our issues are, our challenges are, and what our future is looking like, the number of students that we, I just felt like it was very productive, and I think they really enjoyed it, and I think the cities would, too.
Well, and I think it almost could, I don't want it just to be a one-sided conversation, but I agree with you, Mrs. Schaffner, that I think we have a lot of things that are going on in our schools that this other governmental agencies don't know about, even our e-pathways program. The publication that Dr. Weisong's department puts out is just phenomenal, as far as the different magnet and programs of emphasis that we actually offer to our students, and we are in the knowledge game, and so knowledge is power, and I think more opportunities we can share. So I'll make that offer on your behalf, and I'll let you know what can be scheduled in the future.
And speaking of Dr. Weisong's, the complaints I'm getting now is, there are too many options and we can't make up our minds, so I don't know how we're going to respond to that.
If you haven't seen me around, it's because I've spent many days representing this board on the VOIP selection committee, and I have to thank Dr. Harper and Purchasing and all the departments involved, and all the volunteers who sat on this election committee, I think there were almost 30 of us. So we asked a lot of questions and got a lot of answers, and hopefully, once they're done negotiating, they can come back to this board with a great solution to bring our entire district to the next level. Also wanted to thank another community group that is so supportive of our students. We know we've had the high school graduations a month ago, but there still seem to be a lot of scholarships that are being shared, and I just wanted to thank Bokey Writers for actually giving three college scholarships to three different students, and to know that they work tirelessly year-round to raise those funds. Thank you, Dr. Griffin, and your entire team for that future-ready conference, I thought it was phenomenal how we had business leaders in the room, we had students in the room, we had administrators in the room, and there were just many aha moments for me, and I'm sure everyone who took the time that day, I've heard nothing but positive feedback, so we're ready for the next one.
And I was just the speaker, Dr. Weisong gets the credit for that.
Thank you, Dr. Weisong, there was a lot of organization to go through, and you did best practices of communication, and it was very blatant to see that. The Orlando Science Center Board, as you know, I sit on that board as well, and we're looking forward to new future partnerships, perhaps with STEM, with them, and with our school districts, so I'll keep you updated. There is a new program through the Florida Department of Transportation, but they only wanted to involve Orange County and Osceola at this point in time, but after talking to Dr. Cody, we'll be coming back to them next year, and it would be no cost to the district, but it's a great opportunity for so many of our students that I think would be benefit to. And Mrs. Almond and I attended the UNCF reception we had in this building this past week, where you, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I forgot, you came in later, that eight scholarships were awarded to Seminole County students, and that's just phenomenal, it's the first time ever that they awarded scholarships to Seminole County students, so I wanted to say thank you for doing that as well. Are there any other comments? Of course, Vice Chairman Lockhart, there is.
I forgot two very important things. One, hot off the presses, the Lyman High School Army JROTC crew just came back from Washington, DC today. They are the 2016 champions of the JROTC Leadership Academic Bowl, pretty amazing. They were, the competition began last fall, there were 1,700 different teams that started out and that finished up with 24 teams meeting in Washington, and so they won the Army National Championship outright, and their team captain was Jordan Franks, and then members of the team were Anthony Del Palazzo, Joshua Toth, and Angelica Sharkey. And want to give a huge shout-out to them for representing Seminole County so well, and also a shout-out to their, to their coach.
Dr. Clark.
Dr. Clark, I was going to say Colonel Clark, but.
Lieutenant Dan.
Lieutenant Dan. We're really fortunate to have a great ROTC program at Lyman High School, and they represented us well, so go Greyhounds, and we're proud of them. Oh, and they also won the Esprit de Corps Award, which is an award that the other teams that are competing on vote for their fellow competitors, so they voted for them for that as well, so that's really cool. The other thing that I wanted to comment on, as a trustee for Seminole State College and serving on the foundation board along with Mrs. Schaffner, we have just finished up a fundraising campaign that has really been pretty incredible, we exceeded the $12 million goal by just a little bit, and lots of people in Seminole County public schools have stepped up to contribute to that campaign for scholarships for our students. Mrs. Schaffner personally has made a wonderful contribution to that campaign to endow scholarships for students, but also, I'm looking at his face, our Young Men of Excellence.
Mr. Guy?
Mr. Guy?
No, oh, for Pete's sake.
A what?
Mr. Blackshear, thank you, I was looking at his face and the name wasn't coming to me. Mr. Blackshear just made a commitment to endow, I believe it was $250,000 for scholarships for our Young Men of Excellence students to Seminole State College. So many thanks to Mr. Blackshear, and thank you to all of you, who I know many of you support our scholarships at Seminole State, so, thank you.
Great news, thank you for sharing. Anything else to come before the board? Seeing none, this meeting stands adjourned, thank you.